Good evening. I'd like to call together the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for August the 23rd, 2021. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Hutchinson.
Present.
Ms. Hoppe.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Ms. Hulteen.
Present.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Councillors, in your packets, you will have the City Council meeting minutes of August the 9th, 2021. You have the special study session notes of August the 9th, 2021, and special study session notes of August the 2nd, 2021, and August the 16th, 2021. Are there any corrections to be noted to the minutes or notes? Seeing none, we'll let those stand as is. Thank you to our clerk for that good work. We are under the approval of the agenda. Do we have any modifications to the agenda? Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask that we remove the Colorado Cities and Towns Week proclamation from this evening as they have canceled that event.
Okay. Without exception, we will cancel that item, and otherwise, the agenda will stand as presented. We've got the two proclamations tonight. I'm going to move to the podium and ask Ms. Samantha Taylor with Jefferson Center for So this is a proclamation concerning National Suicide Prevention Week, September 5 through 11, 2021. Whereas National Suicide Prevention Week, in conjunction with National Suicide Prevention Month, is an annual week-long campaign in the United States to inform and engage health professionals and the general public about suicide prevention and warning signs of suicide. And whereas, by drawing attention to the problem of suicide in the United States, the campaign also strives to reduce the stigma surrounding the topic, as well as to encourage the pursuit of mental health assistance and support people who have attempted suicide. And whereas, as part of the campaign, health organizations are encouraged to conduct depression screening, including self-administered and online tests, and refer interested individuals to a national toll-free crisis telephone number, 1-800-273-TALK. And whereas, since 1975, National Suicide Prevention Week awareness events are held throughout the week corresponding to World Suicide Prevention Day, which is recognized annually on the 10th of September. And whereas, I encourage all residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be it resolved, I Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim September 11, 5 through 11, 2021 be declared Suicide Prevention Week, and at the day of September 10 be declared World Suicide Prevention Day, and witness whereof on this 23rd day of August, 2021, Bud Starke, Mayor.
Thank you. My name is Sam Taylor. My pronouns are she and her, and I am the Youth Suicide Prevention Coordinator at Jefferson Center. Thank you for your commitment to suicide prevention and for your willingness to invite me here to accept this proclamation. Our mental health and exposure to suicide risk are complex and dynamic. There is no single cause for suicide, and it can impact all communities regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, socioeconomic status, or any other layer in our lives. And any one of us can provide support and prevent suicide by being connected and caring humans, by reaching out to one another, just as is stated in this proclamation, being that supportive person. Jefferson Center is committed to suicide prevention within our organization through support for our clients and our staff, and also committed to suicide prevention throughout the community. To learn more about how to recognize when someone in your life might be struggling or how to offer support, free classes like Question, Persuade, Refer, and Mental Health First Aid are available in both English and Spanish, found on the Events tab of our website, www.jcmh.org. And I encourage every single person here and in our communities to save Colorado Crisis Services contact information in their phones and use that resource anytime support is needed. Colorado Crisis Services can be reached 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by calling 1-844-493-8255 or texting TALK, T-A-L-K, to 38255. Thank you.
Thank you much, Sam, and thank you very much for the work that the Jefferson Center does in our community. It really helps a lot of people, so thank you very much for coming tonight. Our next proclamation is in support of Constitution Week, September 17 through 23rd, 2021. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas, on September 17, 2021, and the week following, we celebrate the 234th anniversary of the 1787 Constitutional Convention. And at this convention, the world's oldest written constitution was drafted by the United States, thus outlining the fundamental principles by which our nation is governed. And whereas, our Constitution established six basic governing principles for society. These include popular sovereignty, the rule of law, federalism, judicial review, individual rights, and separation of powers through a system of checks and balances. And whereas, the Constitution ensures the distribution of functions and responsibilities among three separate branches and a system of checks and balances to calibrate those powers, ultimately ensuring the protection of individual rights and liberties. And whereas, the state of Colorado was the 38th state in the Union to ratify the Constitution and entered into statehood on August the 1st, 1876. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2021, as Constitution Week. Constitution Week provides an opportunity for all citizens to learn of Colorado's historic role during our nation's founding. Okay. We are now at our Public's Right to Speak. Thank you. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to provide input on the 2022 budget. And also, members of the public may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under Public's Right to Speak. The public who wish to speak on a public hearing item or a decision, resolution, or motion will be have the opportunity to speak when that item comes up in the agenda. And we also, the members of the public, may comment on any item by going to WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. I have a sign-up sheet for... Let me first go to anyone in the public who would like to speak on the budget. We will open that up first. I don't have anyone to speak on that item, but if you are here and haven't signed up, you may come and speak now. And we don't have anyone online, so I'll go to my roster of speakers. We have Jerry DiTullio has donated his time to Julie DiTullio, so I'd like to invite Julie DiTullio to the podium. And if you would please give us your first name and last name, spell your last name, and give us an address, and make sure the microphone is comfortable for you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, my name is Julie DiTullio. It's D-I-T-U-L-L-I-O, and I'm here on behalf of Jefferson Center for Mental Health, and we are located at 4851 Independence Street in Wheat Ridge. And I'm here this evening to thank everyone that donated their time and their efforts to the Carnation Mile. As part of this year's Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival, we hosted our first-ever Carnation Mile, which was a one-mile run down 38th Avenue between Sheridan and Wadsworth right before the festival parade, with proceeds from the race benefiting Jefferson Center. So therefore, on behalf of Jefferson Center, I would like to extend my thanks to our race organizers, Michelle Del Piccolo and Sidney Ayers of Right Start Race Management, the Carnation Festival Committee, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, Public Works, and the Parks Department for all of their hard work in helping make this race a successful part of the Carnation Festival. I would also like to thank Mayor Bud Starke, City Treasurer Chris Miller, and City Council members Janice Hoppe, Judy Hutchinson, Zach Urban, Rachel Hulteen, Corey Stites, and Amanda Weaver for contributing a portion of your public outreach funds in support of this event. Council members Leah Dozeman and Valerie Nosler Beck, I know that you already had allocated all of your funds for this year, so you were unable to donate, but I do thank both of you for your moral support and for helping to promote the race. So our hope is that we can bring the race back next year as part of the Carnation Festival once again and continue to see the event grow over years to come. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DiTullio. I want to tell you how much I enjoyed seeing the racers. I had just finished a wonderful pancake breakfast over at the Wheat Ridge Grange, and I walked out and there were racers crossing the finish line. I was glad to cheer them on. I was happy that they had that I wasn't there to have to run. So, but it looked like a great event. So thank you very much, and we'll look forward to having that back in the future. That's all the speakers I have signed up. If there's anyone online or in the audience who hasn't signed up but would like to speak, this is your opportunity to speak under Public's Right to Speak.
No one is raising their hand in the Zoom format.
Okay. Very good. Then we will continue on with our agenda, and we will start with item number one. This is our consent agenda. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Can you hear me in my microphone on my with my mask? Motion to award a contract and to approve payment to Mid-America Pool Renovation, Inc. for the leisure pool resurfacing in the amount of $125,000. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Rec Center leisure pool shell needs to be resurfaced. The surface of the pool is designed to last between 10 to 12 years, and it was last resurfaced in 2008. The current surface is cracking and has outlived its expected longevity. If the resurfacing is not completed, the pool shell can leak and create a potential safety issue for the guests using the facility. Also, Resolution Number 41-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $33,534 for the 2020 workers' compensation insurance premium adjustment. At issue, the city recently conducted its workers' compensation premium audit with Pinnacle Assurance for the year 2020. The audit resulted in a premium adjustment of $33,534. The increase is due to reassigning employees into more appropriate workers' compensation codes to ensure adequate coverage, underestimating of payroll in 2019 for 2020, and omission of non-paid boards and commission members in the original quotation. Also, Resolution Number 42-2021, a resolution in support of an application to the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program for Clear Creek Trail concrete signage and safety improvements. At issue, the Parks and Recreation Department is applying for a Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Program grant for improvements along two stretches of the Clear Creek Trail. The improvements would include upgrading sections of the trail from asphalt to concrete, adding additional wayfinding signage, and making additional safety improvements. A resolution of support is required from the City Council to approve to apply for this grant.
Thank you very much. This is our consent agenda item. May I have a motion to approve Agenda Items 1A, 1B, and 1C?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmember Weaver, do you care to vote? You did? Oh, there it is. It finally showed up. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Two. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 14-2021, An Ordnance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, and in connection therewith, approving the conveyances of real property to and from the city. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, DBA Renewal Wheat Ridge, RWR, owns property located at 7690 West 38th Avenue, which has been under active environmental remediation since 2013. The Colorado Legislature passed Senate Bill 14-073, which provides a state income tax credit for the environmental remediation of contaminated land. State law requires that the city both pay for remediation and own the land to be eligible for the tax credits. The city has, on an annual basis, provided funding to RWR to pay for the environmental remediation of the property. This ordinance will convey the property to the city in order to obtain the tax credit certificate, and then convey the property back to RWR once the tax credits are secured so that RWR could sell the property to Wheat Ridge Coroner's Development for future development.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Will the clerk please poll the council? Or actually, Mr. Stites, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 14-2021, An Ordnance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, and in connection therewith, approving the conveyances of real property to and from the city on first reading, order published, public hearing set for September 13, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers, 7500 West 29th Avenue, if allowed to meet in person on the date per COVID-19 restrictions, and that it take effect upon approval by the authority of the intergovernmental agreement, but in no event later than November 2021, as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Actually, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move now to Agenda Item Number Three. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to award a contract to Concrete Works of Colorado for Phase One of the Improved Wadsworth Project in the amount of $34,971,468.01, with an additional contingency of $1,500,000, for a total of $36,471,468.01. At issue, the Improved Wadsworth Project was advertised for bids in mid-April 2021, and bids were opened on July 1st, 2021. Staff is recommending that the lowest responsive bidder, Concrete Works of Colorado, be awarded a contract in the amount of $34,971,468.01, which includes the base bid, all four bid options, related water and sanitation work, and an additional $1,500,000 in contingency, for a total award of $36,471,468.01.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
I do. I will start, but Mr. Mark Westberg is here, the project manager on this project, to answer any questions that the council may have. So after many years of planning, community outreach, environmental assessments, historic property assessments, right-of-way acquisitions, engineering and design, staff is excited to bring forward a contract for Phase One construction of the Improved Wadsworth Project. Phase One will improve Wadsworth Boulevard from approximately I-70 to 41st Avenue to relieve traffic congestion, improve business access, and provide better options for pedestrians and cyclists. Last improved in 1950, this phase of the project includes modernizing and improving Wadsworth with an efficient and safe intersection design at 44th Avenue, safer entrances and exits for vehicles accessing businesses, and a continuous sidewalk on the west and a bike pedestrian path on the east side to the Clear Creek Trail. We were also able to include four alternate bid options in this contract to add sidewalks and streetscape from 41st to 38th on the west side of Wadsworth, sidewalks and streetscape from 41st to 35th on the east side, and extend the third traffic lanes on the east and west sides of Wadsworth from 41st south past 38th Avenue. This was made possible in part by another grant recently awarded to the city from CDOT in the amount of $1.4 million from the Revitalizing Main Streets program. So this has been a very, very complicated project. You've heard many, many updates on this, and the project has involved many different stakeholders in our community, which and requires its projects requiring a significant amount of funding to pull off this project. For this phase of the project, approximately $28 million of funding is coming from federal grants and contributions, $3.5 million from state grants and contributions, $466,000 from the Jefferson County Open Space. The Wheat Ridge Water and Sanitation Districts will also improve their facilities within Wadsworth as part of this project, and their estimated cost to do that is around $3 million. And finally, the city's contribution for this phase of the project is $4.9 million for construction and engineering management, and another $1.5 million for contingency for items that may come up during the construction. Many thanks go out to our community, our business and property owners along Wadsworth and City Council for their patience and support of this project. A huge thanks goes out to Mark Westberg, who's standing over there, very anxious. He wants to speak. He wants to do a PowerPoint. I told him no PowerPoint this evening. But a huge thanks goes out to Mark, who has shepherded this project from the beginning over seven years ago, I guess. We're close to seven, around seven years now, right? Eight year, eight and a half? Okay. But who's counting? But Mark did shepherd this project from the very beginning, over and through and around many twists and turns, as you can imagine, and different obstacles. As I mentioned earlier, this project has been very complicated, and Mark's without Mark's tenacity, patience, experience, and drive, this project would not have come to fruition. So thank you, Mark. Council's approval of the contract this evening would be contingent on final concurrence from CDOT on the contract, which we expect very soon, at which point a notice of proceed can be issued to the contractor with construction, hopefully to start this fall. The project will take approximately two years to complete. We are actively also seeking funding for Phase Two of this project and hope to hear soon on additional funding from the federal government. Because we received that most recent grant of $1.4 million, that decreases the amount of money we need for Phase Two. So we did ask Congressman Pearl matter's office for $10 million to be included in the most recent transportation bill that you may have heard about on the news this evening. It's currently not in the Senate version of the bill, but we're hoping when it gets to reconciliation, maybe those funds will get included back in that bill. So we should know in a few weeks. But with that, we'll take any questions. Again, Mark's here to answer any more detailed questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And before we do get any questions from council, I'd like to invite the public to comment on this item. If you I have no one signed up to speak on this item. If anyone is here in the hall or online on a Zoom format, if you'd like to speak on this item number three, now is your opportunity. And I will see I don't see anyone coming to the podium here, and I'll check with the clerk and see if we have any hands raised.
No one raised their hand yet.
Okay. Well, we will then close our Public's Right to Comment on this item and open it up to questions or comments from council, and start with Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just enormous thanks to staff. I know I've been talking with Mr. Westerberg for most of those eight years about this project, so it's exciting to see it getting to this point. So my questions are really focused around what are the next steps? In particular, I know, I mean, the majority, really almost this entire project is in District Two, and is a significant concern from my constituents about how we're going to be mitigating traffic cutoffs into adjacent neighborhoods and how we're going to be supporting our businesses. I do remember that traffic will be two lanes flowing in each direction at all times, if I'm remembering correctly, which is good to hear. But what's the plan moving forward for community outreach and community information?
We have a consultant hired as a part of the construction management team with AECOM that's helping us. She's got a hotline number. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but if anybody has concerns about things, call that number. It should be posted on our website by now. If not, we'll make sure we get it on there. I know there's some concerns with, you know, people cutting through neighborhoods and trying to get down around the construction project, but our hope is that, you know, at least in the northern section, we're providing as much capacity today as during construction as we do today. We've got two lanes in both directions at all times, except maybe very late at night when they might close some things and move things to one lane in each direction. Otherwise, we're going to try really hard to keep that two lanes in all directions open at all times to try to keep the traffic moving through there. I think we've got a, you know, sort of a contingency plan of what to do in those neighborhoods. Our neighborhood traffic management program, the NTMP, is probably the best resource for folks to contact to sort of start that process if they want to, you know, possibly put in temporary speed bumps or temporary speed signs or something like that, just to remind the folks that might be going through the neighborhoods to slow down a little bit and make sure they drive the speed limit. So that's the big thing is just to try to keep the same capacity on Wadsworth that we have today throughout construction.
So if I'm understanding correctly, are there funds available that the city could be working with?
be working with those adjacent neighborhoods to do deterrence, like temporary speed bumps? I mean, how how does that move forward? Do they either request it, or are you guys going to do it proactively?
Our our plan is not to do it proactive at this point. We don't want to go flood the neighborhood with speed bumps and stuff if they're not needed in a particular location. It's hard for us as city staff, we don't live in that neighborhood, to know if there's a situation that's different from what's there today. You know, we've we've got quite a few speed bumps in the neighborhoods, especially north and west of 44th and Wadsworth, that already have speed bumps. I don't know that there'd be much more we could do for those neighborhoods during during construction. The 48th Avenue cul-de-sac is probably going to get cut off pretty quickly, so that's probably going to eliminate a lot of the cut-through traffic in in that northeast quadrant of of of, you know, 44th and Wadsworth. So it's really sort of south of 44th that we might need to do some things, and we've got a fair number of speed bumps over on the west side already, too. So we'll just have to kind of see how things go. I think if if residents are concerned and they notice something, then certainly call us and we'll we'll run through the process. When the RTD was building the G Line station up there, the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, we did put temporary speed bumps in the neighborhood to the west because they complained about people cutting around that that construction project when when the train blocks Ward Road. And we did put temporary speed bumps there, and I think some of those are still there, but I think when the construction was over, some of the neighborhoods neighbors said, let's get these things out of here. They're kind of a hassle to to drive over. So certainly, if people think there if an issue develops in the neighborhood that that people are concerned with, certainly contact us and we can we can do an evaluation on that and see if something's warranted.
And council member, well, the city will also be very proactive in the sense that we won't necessarily wait for complaints. We'll be monitoring traffic congestion and flow, and if we notice something, we'll go out and be proactive. But of course, we'll also rely on neighborhood complaints and and get out there as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other part of my question had just been, is there a community meeting planned to inform people that construction is coming and what to expect? Because I can't walk my dogs through my neighborhood right now without, I mean, people are anticipating this and I'm sure are eager to know.
We can get you that hotline number. Maybe you can just start passing that out to folks.
I may do that.
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna work on the person that we have hired that works for AECOM, the the contract that Mark mentioned. She's both an engineer and a communication specialist, so is, I think, a double whammy so she understands the process but also understands communications. So my next step is to get the whole team together and talk about the next steps, community meetings. We're looking at potentially even apps on phones where people could would can submit comments and complaints very quickly, potentially weekly business meetings, Zoom meetings if necessary. So we're we're working on that plan now.
Yeah, I guess.
She's she's working directly with Sarah Spalding, our PIO, to work on that plan. And, you know, typically on a project this size, one of the first things we do is we have the contractor host a neighborhood meeting to, you know, let everybody know what their plan is, hopefully roll out a an updated schedule on when things are going to happen and and all that kind of stuff. So all that'll be in the works as we as we start to get into mid-October.
Okay, perfect. I think that was the answer I was looking for, so thank you so much. And and the other stuff was all great. Thank you.
Ms. Nosler, back.
I just would ask, as one of those streets that's already being used as a I live on one of the streets that's already being used as a cut-through on Wadsworth, even as it stands right now, that we we really prioritize and be proactive in some of those speed reduction things that we can do around schools. There are a lot of elementary schools within the path of where a lot of these diversions are are going to potentially be, and they may not be the detours that we assign, but people already have a natural habit of using many of our side streets as cut-throughs. And so just as somebody who, you know, sends their kids off to school every day without sidewalks, I'm just thinking about a four-way stop on Dudley that they I know will be dangerous. So if we can just be as proactive as possible there and not wait for anybody to call in on that, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within that 1.5 million contingency the city has, is that for project expenses relating to the city or both the Water District and the Sanitation District, or is there a separate contingency that those utility districts have that they'll be dipping into, or how would that play out if there's, you know, obvious expenses?
That's the that's the city's contingency only. They're responsible for all the work associated with their contracts and of course, their IGAs with them. So they've they've got the three-point, I think, a little over $3 million of their funds invested in this. Right now, I don't think there's any contingency in there for their stuff, so they'll need to if something comes up that needs to change order, we'll need to contact them and get that worked out really quickly to keep things moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for Ms. Hutchinson?
Hutchinson, yeah, thank you. There's a Phase One and a Phase Two. So exactly, do you know, well, of course, not exactly, but what are you speculating the length of time for this project to be?
So the the contract right now runs through the for Phase One, including all the options, runs through the end of December in '23. Now, with the addition of all the options, there may be the need to extend that out a little bit more, which is allowed in the contract. But our plan right now is to try to finish this thing up by the end of 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, Ms. Hulteen, may I have a motion on Agenda Item Number Three?
Yes, thank you. I move to award pending CDOT's concurrence and approve subsequent payments to Concrete Works of Colorado, Lafayette, Colorado, for the Improved Wadsworth Project in the amount of $34,971,468.01, with an additional contingency of $1,500,000, for a total of $36,471,468.01.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just I wanted to point out that if you go to What's Up Wheat Ridge and go to Improve Wads and scroll down to the very bottom, you can sign up to get traffic alerts related to that. But then the only other thing I wanted to say is the hotline I looked on, our city website and What's Up Wheat Ridge, and didn't find a hotline, so maybe we should make that hotline a little more obvious on our website.
Honestly, don't think that's available yet until construction's getting ready to start, but we'll we'll do a major press release when that's ready.
Okay. Any additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, want to thank staff for all their their diligence and hard work, and in particular, I just, it's been, I think, quite some quite a victory that we've been able to keep the bike ped facilities on both sides for the whole project. I've been involved, you know, from the get-go when we had this, like, dream vision of, like, cycle tracks, and that was really exciting. And then when it got value-engineered, I know that the advocacy to keep those facilities on both sides in place and the tenacity to go after Jefferson County to get the grant and ensure we have the connection to the Clear Creek on the west side, I recognize that 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 happened because our staff was really committed to that. And all too often in these projects, those are the things that go away, and I'm just really proud that today they're still there, and they're going to really serve our community. I I pay very close attention to people walking and riding their bike along and across Wadsworth, and this this project's going to substantially improve the safety for those people, and and I know that just wouldn't happen without at least two of the faces I see in the room today. So thank you so much for for keeping those in there, and I'm really excited to ride my bike down to Clear Creek from my house in 2023.
Thank you. Any any further discussion on the motion? Well, I don't want to delay this project any longer, so I will ask the clerk to please poll the council. Okay, thank you very much, and good luck, Mr. Westberg. Okay, that that concludes the agenda items that we have here. I'd like to go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
I don't think I have anything this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl, or what? I'm sorry, did you say that you had anything?
No, we don't. We're good.
You're good, okay. We'll go to City Manager, City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Goff, Mr. Dahl.
I'm I'm good, too. Nothing tonight.
You know, everybody's good tonight. I'm glad for that. So with that, we will go to Elected Officials Matters. I'll start with our clerk, Clerk Kirk Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most of you know, today was the deadline for candidates for the five open seats in Wheat Ridge to file nominating petitions. The only race that has two nominating petitions filed is for counsel in District Three by Councilmember Weaver and Mr. Ihor Figlis. The mayor and council members Dozeman and Hoppe will be running unopposed. Only one candidate filed for the city council seat in District Two, Mr. Scott Ohm, so he will be running unopposed for that seat. We have not begun to review Mr. Figlis's submission of his petition because it arrived at 4:47 this afternoon, but we will be looking at that first thing in the morning, and we should be able to tell him whether his petition is sufficient or not shortly. The election is, of course, November 2nd, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have about the election or the process going forward. Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Nosler, back.
Thanks, Mayor. This weekend coming up is the Mid-Century Modern Home Tour that Local Works is hosting. It's an awesome tour that showcases some of the coolest architecture in Wheat Ridge, I think. I'm not going to be able to attend, but it's really awesome. You can still attend virtually. I'm going to be out of town for a family event, and so between so the Mid-Century Modern Home Tour in person is August 28th, Saturday, from 1:00 PM to 5:00. And then the Digital Mid-Century Modern Home Tour, where you can do a visual exploration of all the homes, is August 28th through September 4th. So it should be a lot of fun.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to welcome all of our students back to school. The first week is over, and it's already been a little bit crazy, but I just wanted to remind everybody to slow down and do do the speed limit and watch out for those little kiddos walking to and from school, because I know my young ones are really excited to be able to bike and walk to school with, of course, Papa trailing close behind in a vehicle, but just just to ensure everything's okay, but just to watch out for that. And then also, Local Works is hosting Porches and Patios this Thursday, August 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Clear Fork Cider. They're doing buy-one-get-one tacos from the Mecizo Brew Cantina, Big Blue Food Truck, which was also at the Coronation Festival, if you were able to check them out. So my kiddos and I are going to stop by for a little while, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got two things. First of all, I was really excited to see that Rhythm Cycles relocated from their small location in District Two to a larger building on 44th Avenue. When I was talking to the owner, he told a great story of they originally went into their space, which was right off of Fenton and 44th, just as a part-time, a couple guys who knew how to work on bikes and are now so successful. I believe they purchased the building and on 44th wanted to stay in Wheat Ridge, stand District Two, and I will now declare District Two the bike-iest district because we've got Wheat Ridge Cyclopes and Rhythm Cycles. It's just great to see businesses like that who start with a small idea in our city and get big and stay in the city. So I'm excited for that. And then I hope I don't take too much of Councilmember Weaver's wind out of her sails, but we just had a really great Regenerate Wheat Ridge program at Happiness Gardens this last Wednesday. Councilmember Weaver was instructing people on bees and pollination, and Mayor Starker came and put on the bee suit and looked in looked in the beehive, but we had members from our community ages brand-new, little babies, well up into, like, octogenarians, and it was a great program, and it's just really great that we're able to offer things like that in our in our city and in District Two. So I'm really excited about it. And we have more programs coming up and a Harvest Festival on October 16th. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We may need to look at our monopoly laws with respect to bicycle monopolies in districts. So thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also a big thank you to to Wheat Ridge Parks and Rec for for orchestrating all of the Regenerate Wheat Ridge programs. We have a fun thing in District Three coming up this weekend. It's a dumpster day and a District Three meeting. We will be at Louise Turner Park at 8:00 AM? Nine, nine, collecting your dumpster items, not electronics and mattresses. So it'll be fun. We'll we'll be collecting the dumpster things at 9:00, and then we'll be having a District Three meeting at 10:00. So District Three folks, please come out. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excited for Saturday. Ms. Weaver and I will be there, ready to hear all the citizens and and throw away all your big stuff. Looking forward to that, too. Coming up, Let's Talk Applewood. It has a open house on Wednesday, September 1st, from 4:30 to 6:30. That's a Trinity Church. And also Wednesday, September 8th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. So they're wrapping up the second phase of Let's Talk Applewood, so if you haven't been a part of that yet, please get in as soon as you can.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a 24-hour resource in our community. It's the Walk-In Crisis Center for the Jefferson Center for Mental Health. It's 4643 Wadsworth Boulevard, and with it being a national, well, with next month being National Suicide Awareness Prevention Awareness Month, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was reminded that we have that resource out there.
Thank you. I would like to to sort of close with with a good deal of thanks to the folks who put on the the beekeeping program on Wednesday. Had a great time being there, learned a lot, got hot in the bee suit, but didn't get stung. So there's a lot of and a lot of really good, good growing information going on out there. Please, please be aware that that we have traffic and and construction going on in lots of places in our city. I want to want to wish Mr. Westberg and his and his staff a very safe and and good project going on in Wadsworth. Our children have gone back to school. They are they are active, and there's a lot of a lot of activity in our streets. Please drive slowly. Please be careful and and watch out for everybody. We will we will be out for a couple of weeks. Next week is our fifth Monday, so we'll not have a council meeting. The week after that is September 6th. We will be gone for the Labor Day holiday, and I want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a very safe, safe travels or staying home. So with that, if there's no more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.